Everyone, thank you so much for joining us for our Durham County Board of Commissioners regular session this Monday, March 24th. I will bring us to order with our public charge. The Board of Commissioners asks its members and residents to conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous manner, both with the Board and fellow residents. At any time, should any member of the Board or any resident fail to observe the public charge, the Chair will ask the offending person to leave the meeting until that individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the Chair will recess the meeting until such time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. Commissioner Burton, would you like to do the land acknowledgement?
Yes, I would.
Yes, I will, thank you. As we convene for the Durham County Commissioners Meeting, it's crucial to recognize the painful truth of history. We stand on the stolen ancestral lands of the Kataba, Ino, Okanichi, Shakori, and Tuscorora peoples, whose deep connection to this land predates our arrival. We acknowledge with humility the unjust displacement and violence that occurred leading to the dispossession of indigenous peoples from their homelands. Their resilience in the face of such adversity is a testament to their strength and spirit. May we humbly honor the ancestors and elders of these nations, both past and present, by committing ourselves to fostering, understanding, healing, and justice for all who inhabit this land. Let us walk forward together with open hearts, acknowledging the past and embracing a future guided by compassion, respect, and unity.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. Commissioner Valentine, would you like to lead us in the pledge? Thank you, Commissioner Valentine. I'll now ask if there's any agenda adjustments. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Burton, second by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved. I'll pass it to Clerk Wallace for announcements.
Good evening, everyone. I'll read the announcements published in tonight's agenda. The City of Durham and ISLA NC welcome everyone to the Twenty-Second Annual Women's Forum, Moving Forward Together: Women Educating and Inspiring Generations, on Thursday, March 27th, in honor of National Women's History Month. This event will run from 5:30 till 7:30 PM at City Hall Council Chambers located at 101 City Hall Plaza. Board Chair Neta Alom joins other local women on a panel to discuss education, creating balance, personal growth, and more. There will be a live broadcast on Durham Television Network and YouTube, and there is additional information that can be found on the City of Durham website. Durham County residents are invited to give their feedback and budget priorities as Durham County staff, management, and Durham Board of County Commissioners plan for the fiscal year 2025-26 annual budget. Durham County Government has established an easy-to-use budget portal to collect information from residents. There is a link that you can access that portal. Resident participation in the budgeting process is key to deciding Durham County's operational, personnel, and capital spending. It is open until May 30th. Join Durham County Library in partnership with NCCU School of Government, Legal Aid NC, Disability Rights NC, Emancipate NC, and more for a day of free legal resources for the whole community. This Resource Fair is from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Saturday, March 29th, at the main library. Attendees can connect with programs and resources for their legal needs, while scheduled panels will provide insight into current legal issues like fair housing, restor- I can't even say that, justice, and recent Supreme Court decisions. You can register, there is a link for registration. The Durham Office on Youth is now accepting applications for the 25-26 Durham Youth Leadership Fund. The Durham Youth Leadership Fund funds community-based projects from young people, youth groups, community groups, and organizations that focus on at least one focus area. The DYLF will provide up to 15 one-year grants ranging from $500,000 to $25,000. You can learn more about the DYLF, including the focus areas for this year's awards. There is a link for you to visit, and applications are due on Sunday, March 30th. Now that Durham County taxpayers have their reappraisal notices, they are encouraged to review the information and report out any out-of-date incorrect information to the tax office, compare the sale price of similar properties, and if you disagree with your assessed value, file an appeal with the Board of Equalization and Review. Property owners may schedule a reappraisal information meeting with the tax staff representative from now until April 12th at various locations in the county. You can visit the county website for additional information. You can also call 919-560-0300. Volunteers and staff from the Durham County Department of Public Health Partnership for a Healthy Durham, Duke Health, NC Central, L. Central, and Community Partners will be stationed at various locations and events in Durham County to ask questions about the community's health as a part of the Durham County Community Health Assessment Survey Process. Look for volunteers wearing identical blue t-shirts that say "Survey Team" on the front. The CHA is a public health survey conducted every three years to assess Durham County's strengths and needs regarding the community's health and well-being. Each survey takes approximately 10 to 15 minutes and will be available in English and Spanish. Participants who complete the survey will receive a thank-you gift, and all responses will remain anonymous. To view the 2023 Community Health Assessment Document or Executive Summary, you can visit HealthyDurham.org. Join the Durham County Public Art Program for a Community Mural Paint Day on Saturday, April 12th. Drop in between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM at the 500 East Main Street parking deck located off of Elizabeth Street next to the City of Durham Police Department. All ages and experience levels are welcome. This project will see residents' help in the creation of art throughout the community building. Learn more about the team of artists for this project at artofanon.com. If you are coming with the group, you can please, they're asking that you reach out to Sarah Martin. There is a telephone number as well as an email address to reserve a time slot. Durham County girls in 9th and 12th grades are encouraged to apply for the North Carolina Emergency Management Experience. A free five-day public safety career exploration is running from June 23rd through the 27th at the North Carolina State Emergency Operations Center in Raleigh. Sessions include field trips, career-building connections, hand-on experiences, and much more. There is a link as well as an email address. And lastly, sorry. As county staff begins preparation for the fiscal year 25-26 budget, public input is being solicited on issues which may need to be addressed during the budget process. The county manager's recommended fiscal year 25-26 budget will be presented to the Board of Commissioners on Monday, May 12th, with individual budget work sessions with the Commissioners to be scheduled for the period of May 12th through June 5th. Those dates are listed in the agenda. There will also be public hearings at the Commissioner's Regular Session Meeting on May 27th at 7:00 PM, with final adoption of the budget being scheduled for Monday, June 9th. Additional comments can also be emailed to commissioners@dconc.gov, or residents are encouraged to use the Durham County online fiscal year 25-26 resident portal to have their voice heard if they are unable to come in person. There is a link for that portal as well. That concludes the announcements read in tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Clerk Wallace. Are there any additional announcements from the Board? Seeing none, then I will move us on to our ceremonial items, beginning with the proclamation where John Hope and Aurelia Whittington Franklin Orchid Appreciation Day. Either Commissioner Valentine or Commissioner Lee has someone.
I think I may have number one here, alright. Wasn't sure if it was seven or one, I wasn't sure. Alright. Since you already named the proclamation, I'll just start with the first, whereas. Whereas, Dr. John Hope Franklin, the undisputed dean of African-American historians, a former professor at North Carolina Central University, author of the widely-read From Slavery to Freedom, and the James B. Duke's Professor Emeritus of History at Duke University, and who has two.
No, you have the one.
Oh, okay. Alright. And whereas Aurelia Whittington Franklin, humanitarian and librarian, served as advisor, editor, and a research assistant to her husband, Dr. John Hope Franklin, and whereas Dr. Hope Franklin, Dr. John Hope Franklin, humanitarian and civil rights activist crusader against environmental racism, nature advocate, and talent cultivator of orchids. And whereas, how do you say her name? I want to make sure I get it right. Aurelia. Aurelia Whittington Franklin, a kind and selfless person, epitomized horticultural excellence in orchid cultivation, advocated civic engagement as a means of making the world a better place for the future generations, and whereas Dr. John Hope Franklin and Aurelia Whittington Franklin have empowered North Carolinians and people across the United States of America and the world to fight for racial equality, pursue educational opportunities, and place a mirror on the American life and injustice wherever it stands. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Neta Alom Chair, and on the behalf of the Durham Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March 29th, 2025, as John Hope and Aurelia Whittington Franklin Orchid Appreciation Day in Durham County, North Carolina, this 24th day of March 2025.
Thank you, Vice Chair Dr. Lee. We have ACM Tammy Hall here to join us.
Sure. Good afternoon, Commissioners Tammy Hall, Assistant County Manager. I do not see Carter Q here, but what I will say is he is very, very passionate about the work of the Franklins, and I'm just happy my children were John Hope Franklin scholars through Hillside High School. So I know that Carter is very excited, and we appreciate him for bringing this proclamation forward, and thank you for acknowledging.
Commissioner Burton?
Yes, this is really great that we're acknowledging Dr. Franklin and his wife's love of orchids and plants and things like that. I met Dr. Franklin and his wife when I came to Durham to go to library school, and a person, young man who was going to Central for pre-med, lived with the Franklins, and we went to the same church, and I would go over there to pick him up, and I had to honor him, meeting them both in their homes, so this is really great. He did like, they loved flowers and plants and horticulture and things like that, so this is really good that we're doing this to honor them.
Thank you. Mr. Valentine?
Yes, I'd be remiss if I did not take a moment to celebrate both Mr. and Mrs. Franklin for their contributions to both the City of Durham and the county. In 1947, Dr. Franklin actually was on the faculty at North Carolina Central University when he authored, which is still today, the seminal text on African-American history from slavery to freedom. And so as a graduate of North Carolina Central University School of Law, does my heart well to have this family once again acknowledged for their contributions to our city and our county. And so thank you, Commissioner Lee, for reading the proclamation, and thank you, Assistant County Manager Hall.
Absolutely, and I just saw Carter. You want to come on up, because you're on twice. Thank you.
You want us to read the next one first? Okay. Commissioner Valentine, you have the next.
Yes, proclamation- Yes. Proclamation. Chair, did you want to?
No.
Okay. Proclamation acknowledging Pearl Friar Gardening Appreciation Day 2025. Pearl Friar, a native of Clinton, North Carolina, established an internationally known Pearl Friar Topery Garden in Bishopville, South Carolina in 1984 to unite humanity around the principles of love, peace, and goodwill, and inspiring the next generation of horticulturists and topery artists. And whereas Pearl Friar attended the North Carolina Central University as a military veteran, a husband, father, and friend to many. His personal life and exploits in horticulture epitomize the North Carolina Central University motto, "Truth and Service." And whereas Pearl Friar's adherence to positive thinking, hard work, and perseverance, and appreciation of nature in the outdoors have led him being celebrated in numerous books, magazines, newspapers, and television interviews. And whereas Pearl Friar has been the subject of the documentary film, A Man Named Pearl, awarded at Salem Film Festival in Oregon and Heartland Film Festival in Indianapolis, Indiana. And whereas Pearl Friar has received awards and accolades from the Garden Conservancy, Ruth Foundation for the Arts, South Carolina State Museum Commission, the University of South Carolina, Andy Warhol Foundation for the Visual Arts, the National Garden Clubs Incorporated, as well as other entities. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Nida Alom Chair, on behalf of the Durham Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March 29th, 2025, as Pearl Friar Gardening Appreciation Day in Durham County, North Carolina, this 24th day of March, 2025. Signed, Nida Alom Chair, Durham Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Valentine, and I'll pass it to Mr. Carter. Can you press the button on your mic, please? Thank you.
I really want to thank you all for this consideration. It really means a lot to many of the former members, current members of the North Carolina Federation of Garden Clubs, which were started on the campus of North Carolina N.T. State University in 1935. And at one time in Durham, there were at least 10 clubs that were part of the Federation of Garden Clubs. They were the Negro Federation of Garden Clubs, and they fulfilled many of the activities and outcomes that now keep Durham beautiful and other entities have undertaken. So it really means a lot to them, and particularly as we prepare for the Second Annual African-American Legacy in Gardening and Horticulture Symposium that will take place this Saturday at nine, begin at 9:30 a.m. So I'm just, just a humble servant, and I'm just so happy that you, as servants of Durham County, have seen fit to pay homage to John Hope and Aurelia Franklin, and also to Mr. Friar. So I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Q., for being one of our volunteer top historians of Durham and all of the service and work that you do in the realm of gardening, but also your service and work at the Durham County Public Library System. We value you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, I want to give Mr. Q. a shout-out. He and I were classmates in library school at North Carolina Central University way back in the day.
Well, I think we had the card catalog that we still, well, anyway.
Yes, we did, with Dr. Deseretta McCallister Harper. But anyway, thank you, Carter, for all that you do for uplifting history here in Durham, what you do for Durham County Library. You are greatly appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. Commissioner Valentine?
Yes, Mr. Q., thank you for your contributions to Durham County. You're one of our hidden gems, and thank you for keeping the name of Pearl Friar alive as a proud son from someone from Florence County, South Carolina. It does my heart well to hear that name, also to know that Pearl's attended the North Carolina Central University and that he saw fit during his time to put our nation first in serving in uniform. So thank you for keeping that name alive.
Thank you, Commissioner Valentine. The next proclamation I will read for National County Government Month 2025. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties, serving more than 330 million Americans, provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. And whereas counties fulfill a vast range of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives. And whereas Durham County government and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities and programs and services. And whereas 2025 National County Government Month activities led by Durham County will include various activities that will highlight Durham County's work and educate residents on the importance of county government. And whereas the state of the county will be presented by me, Chair Nida Alom, during the National County Government Month. The annual highlight is scheduled for Monday, April 28th, during the Board of County Commissioners' regular session. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Nida Alom, Chair, and on behalf of the Durham Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as National County Government Month in Durham, North Carolina, this, the 24th day of March, 2025.
Good evening, Chair Alom and Commissioners and our audience. On behalf of our nearly 2,000 county employees, I'd like to say thank you for this proclamation. We are looking forward, as always, to our County Government Month. As you said, we've celebrated since 1991, and this is a time that we try to bring awareness to the community and to our own staff of the great work that county employees perform day in and day out, and the impact that we have in our residents' lives. We've got quite a few different events coming forth in the month of April, but as you said, for me, the highlight will be having you give the State of the County address on April 28th. In addition to that, we will do a public art tour the week of April 2nd, I'm sorry, the week of April 21. We're going to do Deco Talks. Our public information staff will do a virtual workshop. We're going to do some volunteer activities with some of the agencies in Durham. And so we just have a variety of things. We haven't nailed down everything, but we certainly will have a robust list of things that our people can be involved in, and thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you so much, Ms. Deborah. We appreciate so much all of the work that you do to make sure our residents are aware of the programs and services that Durham County offers, because we're not very much used if people don't know what's available to them from their county government. So we appreciate you so much, and I'm looking forward to the State of the County. It'll be here. The, some of the students from Durham Public Schools will be performing some songs, so it'll be very sweet.
Absolutely.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Valentine?
Yes. Ms. Deborah Craig Ray?
Yes, sir.
I think it is fitting that you stand before this body tonight as we read the proclamation recognizing National County Government Month. For your many years of service to our county and your continued service, we are thankful.
It is my pleasure.
Yes, we are thankful, and so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Valentine. Wonderful. Now I will pass it to Commissioner Burton for our final proclamation resolution.
Thank you, Chair Alom. So this resolution is celebrating, is for celebrating women in construction. Whereas the construction industry has been a driving force in fostering community development through renovation, repair, and restoration products that benefit the promotion of skilled trade careers. And whereas women's efforts in the construction industry, both in Durham and statewide, have contributed to the enhancement of our communities, improving infrastructure and the economy. And whereas women are continuing to break barriers within the construction industry and making strides in equal pay, earning an estimated average 94.3% pay for full-time wage and salary work compared to their male counterparts versus other U.S. industries, where women earn an average of 81.5%, according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. And whereas according to the U.S. Census Bureau, there were more than 14,000 North Carolina women working in various capacities of the construction industry in 2023. And whereas despite these improvements, gender disparity continues to be an issue for women in the construction industry, as evidenced by women comprising only 11.2% of the nation's construction workforce in 2024, according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. And whereas employing women in the construction field will address the construction industry's labor shortage while improving the outcomes of women as it relates to poverty and overall opportunities in male-dominated fields. And whereas Durham County government, along with other organizations such as the North Carolina Chapters of the National Association of Women in Construction, have distinguished themselves as voices for women in construction throughout our county and state. And whereas Durham County government commends women in their, in the construction industry for their many ongoing contributions and impact to communities and people of the county. Now therefore be it resolved that the Durham Board of County Commissioners hereby celebrate women in construction in Durham County and commend its observance to all citizens this day, the 24th day of March, 2025. Nida Alom Chair, Dr. Mike Lee, Vice Chair, Michelle Burton, Commissioner Wendy Jacobs, Commissioner Stephen Valentine, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioners, for this acknowledgement. Women in construction are breaking barriers and reshaping the industry, and I am happy to have with us tonight two pros in the construction industry arena. Certainly, we have Ayesha here, who is standing in the gap for her mother, who served as the national president for Minority Contractors Association. We also have Denise Barnes, who is our current president of the statewide United Minority Contractors Association.
Good evening, Commissioners. We are a premier general contracting construction management firm located right across the street here. We are a proud African-American woman-owned legacy business. As Tammy mentioned, my mother and I serve together as CEO and COO. Our belief is you cannot be what you cannot see, and so we are proud women in construction, Black women in construction, leading the charge in excellence, safety, customer service, and superior value. So we are happy to have this resolution, as we need more of our faces in the room when decisions are being made and when our communities are being shaped. Thank you.
Thank you. Greetings to Commissioners. Again, on behalf of United Minority Contractors Association, we thank you for this acknowledgement and the resolution, not only for the women of construction, but also just the minority to be in this space. We are excited to continue to break those barriers and provide the tools and the resources needed to expand growth, especially for women. Also representing, I'm a part of the, you mentioned the NAWIC, National Women in Construction. So we are making great impact so that we can continue to increase and provide opportunities. Just as Ayesha said, we have to show up so we can show that the next generation has someone to look up to, to enter into this industry. So thank you for the acknowledgement today, and thank you. Tammy.
Thank you so much for all the work and the representation you bring to this work. The four of us actually were able, were at a meeting with Durham Tech this morning and talking about how do we help our students and young people in Durham see themselves in more diverse careers? And this ties perfectly into that of, you know, making sure folks know the different ways that they have a career path. And so being able to have a diverse MWBE program that the county leverages and promotes is so vital to that for our own students and youth, like you mentioned, being able to see themselves in this field. And I also want to shout out ACM Hall for all the work she has done in this space of hosting events here in our chambers to bring different MWBE builders and workers to this space and inviting other community members, because y'all exist and y'all have work, but we want to make sure that folks who are hiring and are purchasing contracts know that you are here. And so thank you ACM Hall for making sure that we promote our Durham businesses and working in conjunction with Deputy County Manager Jones and our Economic Development Director Andy Miracle of the companies that are coming into Durham. We have set goals for them as well of a goal of how many MWBE participation they have, and working with Maurice and Andy, sharing with them, like you're coming into Durham, here's our Durham, a list of businesses that you can do business with. Thank you. Commissioner Valentine?
So yes, 2025 represents the 27th year that we celebrate women in construction. And this year's theme was Together We Rise, and so I want to thank you, young ladies in particular, for standing in the gap for all women, and so Together We Rise.
Vice Chair Dr. Lee?
I just simply want to say thank you for the representation. Representation matters in all forms, and you kind of alluded to it, but, you know, having you, you all show up representing leadership, representing your roles in your jobs, and nationwide, statewide, I just really appreciate that. As a father of a young lady who, you know, she's interested in architecture and, and things of that sort, to have people who look like her kind of in that field is really important. So I just want to say thank you for your representation.
Commissioner Burton?
Yes, I just want to echo what my colleagues have said. I remember as a child growing up in Chicago, my father worked for a real estate development company and just driving around looking at construction, things like that, but you didn't think, okay, as a girl or a woman, you could do that, right? So I am grateful that you all are doing that. I was, had just a quick question. I was wondering if you had like mentoring programs, so like if you went to career days, so young people, young women know that, hey, this is something, that's, this is a viable career, that they can do this too?
Yes, absolutely. So on my other hat, working for actually a construction firm, La Chaise Construction, we do partner, we partner with Durham Public Schools, we partner with Durham Tech within their Skills Trades Program by volunteering, making donations, job shadowing, bringing the students to our job sites for job tours. So there are always opportunities to learn, and we partner with other organizations, have worked with Gloria on many projects and any other entities. So there's many resources and great mentees and mentors out here available for the need. Please reach out.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
That brings us to the end of our ceremonial items. We have our minutes for approval for our, which meetings are they? Just the March 10th meeting. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
A move by Commissioner Burton, second by Dr. Vice Chair Dr. Lee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved unanimously. That moves us now to our consent agenda. Are there any items anyone would like to pull or has questions on?
Yes, I just have one question on one of the items. It doesn't have to be pulled. It's for number 250122, about the 15501, the easements going to the Department of Transportation. I was just curious as to what's happening with that intersection. I think it's 15501 Garrett Road. I didn't know if anybody could answer.
Commissioner Nancy Mitchell's here to answer that question.
There we go. Nancy Mitchell, Senior Real Estate Officer for the county. North Carolina Department of Transportation is doing a grade change at the intersection of fifteen-five-oh-one and Garrett Road. The easements that you are approving the resolution for tonight is to provide access roads on either side of fifteen-five-oh-one to gain access to the elevated highway. The board has actually approved these easements before, and CDOT came back and said, well, you know, we'd really like a resolution. We said, okay, we'll do a resolution. So, that was the, if this sounded familiar, it's because you did, in fact, approve these a few months ago, so. But that, to my knowledge, that's what's happening at that location, assuming nothing has changed.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is because it's an interesting intersection, and I thought that there needs some improvement there, so I was just wondering what was happening. So, yeah.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Or that I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Dr. Lee and second by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent is approved. I'll now pass it to Attorney Williamson for the boards and commissions.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We have a number of appointments here, and the first one is the Adult Care Community, sorry, Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. We have one vacant position, and the board has chosen Gwendolyn Price for that. We have the City County Appearance Commission. We have one vacant position for that, and the board has chosen, the board, sorry, the board has chosen Connor Kirkpatrick for that. We have Durham County Women's Commission. We have one position, one vacant position, and the board has chosen Hannah Jeter. The Durham Planning Commission, one vacant position, and the board has chosen Diana Nunkurchner, Nunkurchner. And we have the Environmental Affairs Board, one vacant position there. The board has chosen Lola Chafatelli. We have the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Authority. The board has chosen Michael Hill for that. We have the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, one vacant position. The board has chosen Shannon Casey. And we have the Raleigh Durham RDU Airport Authority. We have one vacant position, and, I'm sorry, one vacant position, one at-large position. The board has chosen Jacenia El Polanco Caldez? Is that pronounced correctly? Okay. And that's it? Oh, I'm sorry. And Endrenelle Gosh, sorry. And that's it. Congratulations to all.
Thank you, Attorney Williamson. Congratulations to everyone who's been appointed. We appreciate you stepping up to serve. Folks, continue to look at our boards and commissions. We have lots. The city also has boards and commissions, as well as the governor. So, please, continue to look for ways to serve your community. We now have a closed session. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for General Statute one forty-three dash three-one-eight dot eleven A five. Do I need to read it all out?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Valentine, second by Commissioner Burton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Good evening. We met in closed session. Direction was given to staff. I will now entertain a motion to seal the minutes, or to close the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Vice Shirley, second by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.